Joseph Abdallah.
Yeah.
John Bonahudo. John's here, I see him. James Brucefield. Alex McNauton.
Here.
Justin Ongley.
Here.
Jennifer Pody.
Here.
Lisa Roush.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Julie Stewart.
Here.
Peter Tagley.
Here.
Mary Weber.
Here.
And Jim is now with us. You have.
And the chairman's here, so that, I think that's everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know how many of you saw the message that was intended to go out midday today, but unfortunately didn't go out till right before the meeting, my fault entirely. But I want to change the agenda primarily because in case the power goes out, there are several things that have, I think, extreme priority. The first being that the facilities plan and the action on two items. The second item is we need to accommodate Mr. Prouda, who's going to be with us this evening, on his presentation. And finally, I want to make public comment available because there are some concerns about the, I know people have some concerns about our company going to distance learning until the 8th of February. So, do I have a motion in the forum set forth at A' on the agenda?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye for the amended agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? I heard no opposition or abstentions. The chairman votes aye, I think it's unanimous. Okay, we're going to go with that agenda. Everything's still on it, it's just in a different order. Okay, first item is, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Lo Leary for as brief as he can, taking us through his facility five-year plan presentation.
Don't see Donna Larry on right now. Oh, there he is.
He was, there he is.
He is, okay. Just scroll to the second page.
Unfortunately, they changed the order of the meeting. It was supposed to be first.
Okay. We've broken this down into a couple of pieces. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, Don, we can hear you.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's broken down into a couple of pieces. One is the existing, what's in the existing 2020 budget remaining. So there's, there's, well, let's start here. There's some CNR funds for the adding BMS for HVAC control to WPS. You're going to see that in each one of the elementary schools. And what it means is building management system. Now that we've got our new building management system up at the middle high school, we're going to expand it into the elementary schools so we can gain control of our heating system and then eventually put on various other things like lighting. WPS also has some classroom LED lighting upgrades. One room we've got in the CNR. We've got some security hardware upgrades. That's again, in each of the elementary schools. That's to upgrade the hardware and the software and licensing, et cetera, for our card readers, cameras, and our security system. BFS has some clapboard siding on the upper portion of the older building, the front face, which will also get a new sign. Laura and Kathy are working on that now, and I'm helping them to coordinate with a second vendor. They've got a first one. In the BFS, there's some front stair repairs. We're going to chip away at the metal edges and get rid of them and form those stairs like we did WP to make them safer. Burnham School, we've got the same thing, like I said, the BMS for HVAC. We've got some money for some carpeting, this is per square foot. And this is the resilient flooring like we've got up in the middle high school. There's some art room floor tiles that have, that are cracked, and we've got to remove some of those. They're asbestos, and so is the glue beneath them. So we don't want to let that get any worse. Down in the Burnham School, there's, there's a few basement classrooms. And one of the rooms is, well, there's a library and an art room and an IT room. But one of the rooms is a teacher work area, and it does not have an escape window. And they've been asking for that for a few years. So we're going to supply them with an escape window for that room. The security hardware upgrades are just like the other schools, the software and hardware and the licensing. And again, we're going to repair the front steps going into the old section of that school. We could jump back up. I wanted to stay on the CNR fund for now. Let's see here. Okay, so let's jump up to the, I'm sorry?
I was going to say, Don, you don't have to go through all of the, you know, different pricing. But I think as you can show with the five-year plan, the number of tasks that you have shared with the board, and we're looking at essentially what is almost 300 different things that are falling on your plan right now. When you're looking at it, you have some indications of some reds and some blacks. Do you want to talk about some of that for the board members?
Oh, you're, okay, Mike, okay, let me pull that up for you then.
I had to jack for a moment, didn't you mark?
What I've done, yeah.
Didn't you mark all items? You marked, we got a printout of all the different schools and the high school, et cetera, et cetera. But you had markings on certain items on each of those school buildings, correct?
That is correct.
Right? It looked like you itemized things that you, I presume you wanted.
That is correct. I took it.
Go ahead.
What I did was I highlighted and read those things that have been done.
Oh, have been done.
What you, what I provided you was a, yes, that's correct, right? And what Megan is trying to share is that what I've provided you in the form of a capital projects listing is actually a, a plan that at one point can go out to 10 years. But we were taking it one through five years, and we were trying to get as many of the repair items that are on that capital plan into our budgets, whether they be CNR, whether it be 1% fund, whether it be capital facilities budget for this year or next year, et cetera. And later down in the packet, you'll see a, 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 some, some, some reports or analysis from the superintendent and Nicole that have itemized some of the things that we pulled off of these capital plans and put onto our existing 2020 budgets, 2021 budgets, and future 21, 22, in addition to some CNR funds, 1% funds. And we're asking also for some approval on some bond money to replace some of the bigger items. So yes, Peter, what I've provided you earlier does have an indication in red of the things that were completed. But it's got various tabs on it, one for the middle high school. Yeah, one for each of the elementary schools. And there are a list of items that we need to accomplish in the upcoming years to, you know, bring, some are safety, some are, some are just plain capitals, some are, you know, new, new pay, new pieces, some are replacing, you know, failing pieces. But I did this back in 2018, and we've been picking various projects from it ever since, in addition to those that pop up, you know, that are, that are in the need at the present, right?
Are we going to see these things in the budget proposal for this year?
Some of them, we are going to break down.
Megan can answer that.
Yep, and that's part of what I wanted to have Don showcase is exactly what is the plan in order to keep up with our facilities. We recognize that these are aging facilities, and we have to accelerate our planning in order to get ahead. Right now, we're constantly chasing repairs versus really getting into the maintenance model for our schools.
So you're going to bring some of these things to the facilities committee or the, right?
We did that, we did that last week where we talked to the facilities committee and shared how we are proposing to take a big chunk out of that, you know, including what we're going to be able to fit within this year's budget, what we're going to be able to put in our CNR line item, what we're going to be utilizing from the 1% fund, and what would be going into our 2021, 2022 budget. So this is where I want you to see what does the list look like in totality to show what has been Don's plan in order to maintain our buildings and what that would look like, so we can see it in totality. As now, we are going to go into the next part, which is how are we going to now piece this off so we can get into some actions rather than just discussing these projects?
Okay. Are we ready to move on to that?
Sure.
All right, well, there are, what you'll see under action items are three items. One of them is to seek the issuance of bonds under the authority of our 2015 bonding referendum. And this is to do the Chapag Valley School perimeter heating, replace the windows, there are some boilers, and replacement of a $10,000 water, 10,000 gallon water tank. Then we're going to consider whether or not $153,000 will fund a list of repairs to the elementary schools from the elementary capital non-recurring fund account. That's the fund in the lease that we contribute $100,000 a year to so that we have money to do these things. And then the third item is to approve, it's an item that's not really a money spender, that's just approving use of facilities issue. But, so, we have those two items where we're going to take stuff out of the, we're going to take stuff out of the referendum that was approved and bond it. We're going to take some stuff from the elementary account, and there's other items that are going to be in the budget. We're not voting on the budget items tonight. That's something you'll vote on when we vote on the budget, which will be later in the year. But the idea is, is that there's a plan to spread them over the three methods we have financing them and to get some of these expensive, long-term items off of our list. We've already approved the use of funds from the referendum to do the roof. So we don't need to deal with the roof tonight. We just need to deal with these items. So if there is a, if anyone would make a motion, number one, to approve that, we can, we can have it read.
So moved.
Okay, you're moving to consider and if appropriate, approve that the superintendent seek future issuance of bonds and bands to finance the Chapag Valley School perimeter heating, windows, boilers, and replacement of a 10,000 gallon water tank is permitted by the 2015 $39,491,387 referendum, which says, shall Regional School District Number 12 appropriate $39,491,7,387 for the cost of design, construction, furnishing, equipping, and financing of a new agri-science academy to be located on the Chapag Valley campus in the town of Washington, of a renovated science wing and other facilities improvements at the Chapag Valley School, and authorize the issue of bonds and temporary notes to finance the portion of the appropriation, not defrayed from grants, estimated net project cost of $11,751,921. So that's been moved by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Yeah, I'm confused. Where did you just read that from, from the agenda?
No, that, yeah, it was on the agenda, and that is from the referendum. That, that long passage is from the referendum we approved in 2015.
Which is not on the agenda.
Yeah, this was on the, this is on the agenda. Even the referendum language is, should be in the agenda. It was in the original agenda, and it was in the amended version that I created earlier today.
Yeah, item G.
It was item G. Well, actually, take that back. This side, this was, yeah, this was item G, G1.
As I remember, at the FNO meeting, we proposed two things to bring action moments. What about the elementary school? What happened to that?
That's item number two, that's G2, and we'll get to that in a minute.
I'm having trouble reading here. No, G2 is about letting outsiders in the building.
No, that's G3.
That's G3.
I've got an old agenda then, because I don't have.
You may have an old one. The one I sent late today is probably the one.
That, that, that explains why I'm not following what you're reading.
Yeah, this is, this is now B1 on our current, our amended agenda. It was G1 on the old agenda.
Yeah.
And we moved it up in the meeting to get it out of the way because we need to get this done in case we lose power.
Yeah.
So, John?
Yes, I would be in favor of this. The board has to keep in mind that these six items equal about $3,150,000, and it will be bonded. I think, I believe it's going to be a 20-year bond at 2%, which is very favorable rate. The time to do it would be when the rates are low. Although, is going to incur a surcharge on our budget every year. And I think Nicole has an, has an idea of how much exactly the payments are going to be.
I'd like to add also that the FNO committee voted 5 to 0 to 0 in favor of this. So it was unanimous on the finance committee.
That's right. I should have mentioned that this has been recommended to us by the Facilities and Operations Committee, or whatever it's called.
Finance and Operations.
Finance and Operations, that's what it is. All right, any further discussion? Well, let's put it to a vote. Sue, would you please call the roll?
Joe.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Lisa? Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you. Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion passes 12 to nothing.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to accept the motion to consider and if appropriate, approve repairs to the elementary facilities and the approximate cost of $153,000 to be funded by the elementary capital non-recurring fund account.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mary, is there a second?
A second.
Joe seconds, moved and seconded, discussion. John?
Yeah, um, I don't think that all the items that Don described on page one of the proposed capital facilities projects, I'm looking at Burnham Roof, which is $370,000 alone. I would recommend that we do everything out of that CNR now. And, you know, some of the things I know could probably go into the budget, but, you know, we should definitely do as much as we can with that CNR. And why, why, why leave it for future, future budgets or future years?
So, so just for clarification, John, the CNR fund does not have enough to cover the Burnham Roof at this time? So that, I don't know if you, I just.
I thought there was over $1 million.
That's the 1%, non-recurring fund versus the elementary funding. So I just want to make certain as, as we're talking to it, that we're not.
So you're saying the CNR funds are all out of the elementary school fund?
It's the, yes, that is correct, yes.
Yeah, the CNR fund is from the elementary leases, it's $100,000 a year. So in the 10 years we've had that, that provision in our leases, we have put $1 million into that fund. So we, we, and we've been spending it every year.
Can we pay for a lot of these things out of the 1% fund then?
We could when we get there. But, but we'll have to look at the budget. I mean, that, that's always the tension between approving the budget or taking capital items out of the budget and putting them in the 1% fund. So that's the point at which we have that discussion. If we get to that point and feel the budget is too high, and we want to take funds out, and the 1% fund is available, we can use that to pay for those. And we, I would think we have plenty of money in the 1% fund to deal with it, should we get there. But, but that's a decision for another night. Tonight, we're trying to take the items that we can get out of the CNR and, and get that approved so we can put those out to bid. One of the principal issues is we need to get this stuff, we need to get, not out to bid, we don't, we don't bid this, we use a different process, an RFP, a request for proposals. We need to get that RFP process going, so it takes at least a month to do that. And we want to get this done while the, on the bonded items, while the bond market's still favorable. On the other items, we just want to get that in place so that we're ready to go as soon as the school closes for the year, which is in the middle, the early part of June, if we don't get too many more snow days.
I'd like to, just, just one other observation then. I'd like to see a list of the items that are included in $153,000.
Yes, there should have been one attached to the minutes, but it wasn't. But it was a list that was shared with us.
John, you saw it at the FNO meeting.
At the FNO meeting, and I don't know why it wasn't attached to this.
It is in the board packets.
Okay, can we get it on the screen?
I'm happy to share that on the screen right now.
Yeah, let's put that on the screen so everybody can see what it is we're talking about here. Yeah, you want to get to the ones for elementary, if you have to scroll down a little.
Oops, sorry, this is, my computer decided that it wants to play funny with me. Stop sharing for one quick moment, I'm going to apologize. I want to, rather than making everybody go blind, and just scroll through, okay. And if we look at, this is the, there's a tab for the CNR and the bond, and you'll see everything that is listed for the CNR. Fund request is there. And that's where the total of the $153,000 exists. But you will see, and as you can see, it all has to be spent on elementary, which is per our leasing agreement with the towns on how we have to spend that line item.
Right, so there are, there are the, there are the items.
Yeah, Greg, once again, I'd like to point out that the finance committee voted 5 to 0 to 0 to pass this along.
It's a good observation, yeah.
Questions about what is on the list that we can address?
Uh, Lisa?
I just have a question, and you might have said this, but I'm, I'm listening and following. We're doing this now because this is not part of the budget that we're going to be doing in next month, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this is, because it's out of a fund, it's not part of the regular budget, right?
That's correct. And the idea was to try to get these things with RFPs right away so we can lock in prices and get work ready to go, because this is all work we want to do during the summer.
Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Here additionally, it is our commitment to the towns that we put $100,000 in our budget every year for these upkeep. And so right now, we want to make certain that we are doing our due diligence with that line item.
Okay.
Okay.
To be the right time as we're putting together all of these project lists.
Are there further, is there further discussion? Not hearing any, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of this resolution, Sue, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Greg? Hang on, Jim?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Thank you. Lisa?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion passes 12 to nothing.
All right, the third item is to consider and if appropriate, approve use of facilities by outside agencies beginning April 19th, 2021, after the April vacation pending local health conditions. Megan?
As you recall, we have pushed off our use of facilities. The last time we spoke about it, it was going to be March 1st. I think, given that there's the new strand of COVID is on the horizon, I know we've gotten past the peak, but I don't think we've got the woods. I would like to give us a little bit more time in order to make certain that our facilities are not used by outsiders and it continues to be for the education of our students. I figured right now, the timeline that I chose was after April vacation. We know that a month is forever in the land of COVID, but I think that gives us a little bit more time to evaluate the conditions to see if we can open it up to groups such as our swimmers.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion to approve this item to consider? Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I'll see Alex on that one first. Let's, let's, any further discussion of this?
As I understand it, we can always change this again, either longer or shorter, depending on vaccines, et cetera.
You're absolutely right, and this is asking for a little bit more runway before we can take off. Yep.
Yeah, I think that's very prudent.
Mary?
I have a question. Megan, will this include volunteers being brought back into the school?
It would be our hope that once we are able to open up our facilities for outside, not just vendors, but for other people, that would be our goal. But again, we would certainly look at conditions and also the social distancing requirements. So everything we do, I'd say it would be on a step-by-step basis. So, I'm going to say optimistically, yes, but I'm not going to commit myself at this time.
So we may open the pool up, but not, but not bring the volunteers?
That, that is a possibility, depending on, again, health conditions, and it's easier to separate swimmers from our students, and when is the right time to have outside interactions with students? So all of those are considerations as we start to look at how we can normalize. But right now, it's not the time. And considering we were looking at what would be a March 1st opening of our facilities, I don't think it's time right now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so if somebody asks, I have an answer.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Anything further? Okay, all those in favor, Sue, would you please conduct?
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Lisa?
No.
Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 1.
Okay, going to move on to new business and updates. I see that Mr. Prouda has joined us. And I guess we should turn it over to him for a discussion of what we can expect to face.
Thank you. Didn't know quite how to do this because there's certainly a lot of moving parts in Region 12. When you've just added Ag Science, you got Sherman coming down, and you're accepting residents from other neighboring towns. COVID-19 practically wiped out your pre-K enrollment, went from 45 down to 7, and increased homeschooling from 6 last year, 33 this year. And that's, a lot of this stuff is, is built into the overall projection. And some of the increases you're going to see in your projection that you might have noticed already will be my anticipation that we'll be back such to normal this, next, or this September. And so you'll see a restoration of the pre-K program. So that's going to add roughly 35, 40 kids, the numbers. And I think it might take two years for the homeschooling people to come back. So that, that's going to add 25 over the next two years. So you have to, when you're looking at the numbers, you've got that artificial boost built in. So what I thought I'd do, since it's, it's so complex, and with all the moving parts, I thought I'd concentrate on resident enrollment. And that's appendices, I believe GH and I on pages 26 to 30. Now, I don't have that in front of me. I've got some notes that I made. This is tricky on my end because I've got three or four different windows open here. Well, let me tell you first about Bridgewater. In the past 10 years, enrollment went from 217. Um, in the past ten years, enrollment went from two hundred and seventeen, this is resident students now. This is just, uh, it's not who's attending, uh, school in Bridgewater, it's the number of kids from the town of, of, uh, Bridgewater, and that would be, uh, K to twelve. Went from two seventeen down to one fifteen in two thousand and twenty. With some of the boosts that I talked about, I anticipate you're going to have, uh, a hundred and twenty-eight next year. Um, increasing births should push enrollment, this is my initial projection, above one fifty by twenty twenty-nine. Um, births averaged five point eight in the years two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen, and nine point seven in the years two thousand and sixteen to twenty. Now that eleven to fifteen, um, age range there, that, but that year, those kids are in kindergarten to grade four this year. Um, now, when I did the projection, I had two thousand and twenty births through September. And there were ten in the town there. Um, I've got, since the projection was run, updated to put figures from the State Department of Public Health. And there were only seven births in two thousand and twenty. Um, so starting in two thousand and twenty-five, um, my numbers are going to be high for the out years. Um, for a couple reasons, one, it went from ten to seven, and two, um, that, that ten or seven is built into the calculation of how many births I was expecting in twenty-one to twenty, twenty-five. Um, in Roxbury, um, resident enrollment went from two eighty-four, uh, down to one eighty-nine between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty. Next year, I anticipate an enrollment of one ninety-two. Um, again, that's due to the return of PK and homeschool students. Um, in Roxbury, I think the underlying trend is still slightly downward. But the, the slide that we saw these past ten years, I think the, the trend is, is moderating. I expect a resident enrollment of about a hundred and eighty students in two thousand and thirty, so that's, that's down about ten students from where we are now. I'm comfortable in saying that for Roxbury, uh, enrollment has leveled off. Um, the projection estimated there'd be thirteen births in two thousand and twenty. Updated figures from the State Department of Public Health indicate they were twelve, actually, so that's not going to affect the projection that much. Uh, let's look at Washington, Washington resident enrollment went from four oh four in two thousand and ten to two fifty-six in two thousand and twenty. I expect an enrollment of two seventy next year. Um, again, that's the return of PK and homeschooled. Um, I believe the underlying trend for Washington is still down there, uh, is, is still downward. I anticipate a resident enrollment of about a hundred and ninety students in two thousand and thirty. Um, now that might be a little better than that, because when I did the projection, I thought there'd be twelve births, um, in two thousand and twenty. And the updated figures, um, in two thousand and twenty were fifteen, so that's going to add, um. Because I use three years of births, that's going to add one or two years of births to what the figures you got in twenty-one to, um, twenty-five. For resident enrollment in the region as a whole, we had a pretty precipitous decline, nine oh five in two thousand and ten to five sixty in two thousand and twenty. I expect you're going to be, I don't know, close to six hundred kids next year as, um, as, as students return. Um, I think there's going to be an increase of about thirty PK and twenty-one homeschool kids. So that would add right there roughly fifty kids. Um, again, I think the underlying trend is still slightly downward, but at a slower rate, which I know you guys are all glad to see. And, um, I anticipate a resident enrollment, uh, in the district of five thirty-five students in two thousand and thirty. Um, so, I mean, that's literally going from around six hundred next year, which is your, basically, you would have had roughly that this year without COVID, down to five thirty. So losing sixty-some-odd kids in ten years compared to losing, what, three hundred and fifty kids in ten years? So things are turning around for you. Um, projection estimated there'd be thirty-seven births in two thousand and twenty. Updated figures indicate there'll be thirty-four in two thousand and twenty. Now that's where you're going with residents, and, and since you guys have done a whole lot of stuff to, um, try to attract students to the district, um. I, I think I got to discuss some of those efforts and what, what I see is going on here. Um, and if there's a person on the board who's, who's a Ag Science expert, uh, please jump in here at any time. Um, so your non-resident enrollment in the Ag Science program started with twenty-seven students in two thousand and nineteen in grade nine. Uh, this year, you've got forty-seven students in grades nine and ten. Next year, I anticipate eighty-nine students in grades nine through eleven, and when you've got a full build out in two thousand and twenty-two. Um. Well, I've got a number wrong, copied a number wrong, I've got eighteen, I, I think eighty-nine students is the full build. Um. My internet connection is unstable. I'm in Utah, guys, um, it's far different from Connecticut and where I'm staying, um, right now, so I, I hope I can stay with you. Um, now, this, and this future enrollment of about ninety kids is based on attracting one point one percent of the prior year's grade eight enrollment from sending towns. Now, um, I'm, when I do that, figures, I've got a non-resident enrollment of eighty-five to ninety students. Now, many, I don't know what the nature of your Ag Science program is, but, um, many of them have a waiting list. And so if, in your planning purposes, you were thinking that you would have, or built space for, and I don't even know, the number could be a hundred and twenty students. You still may be able to reach that number, but what you'll be doing to reach it is you'll be going deeper into, um. The, the number of the applicant pool, presumably you're taking the cream of the crop now. If you do that, um, you might, um, it might come at a cost to student quality, but you have the ability to adjust that number. Um, now, there's a couple other things that are going on, you accept, uh, other non-residents. In two thousand and ten, you had twenty-five students from Sherman, it appears that you started accepting students from neighboring towns in two thousand and thirteen. I'm not sure each of the three, um, towns do that, I think one or two are more successful than the third, and I quite frankly don't know which they are. Uh, we could look it up on the data. Um, by two thousand and twenty, you enrolled, uh, sixty-one students from towns other than Sherman, now that's going from zero to sixty-one. Which is another way, obviously, to, um, fill your classrooms. Um, it appears that in two thousand and fifteen, the board at that time allowed non-resident students of staff to enroll. And by two thousand and twenty, you had eleven such students, and this would be from staff who live outside of, of the, of three towns of the region. Um, in total, the number of non-resident students outside of the Ag Science program rose from twenty-five to ninety between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty. So when you're looking at total enrollment, I mean, it's, it's, it's sort of artificial for what's underlying i- in the three towns. Um, but that's going on. Um, one of the assumptions in the projection is that you will continue to do this. You will continue to enroll students from other towns, um, and accept students, um, of out-of-town staff members. So if that's on your agenda, well, I, I, I'm, so that's an assumption that I made. Um, and so that's, that's, I think, the simplest way I can present the data to you. There's a lot of moving parts, as I said earlier, uh, you must have some questions. Uh, Nicole did not give me any hints on what you might ask, so when you do ask something, um, and if you're going to refer to a specific page, you're going to have to give me a couple seconds just to find that page in the report, okay? So, take over.
All right. Well, Alex.
Well, it seems to me, uh, short of, uh, putting something in the water in, uh, the region twelve to make that more burst, we're going to have to look outside of our, uh, three towns. And it, then it becomes a simple, uh, economics issue, whether, uh, we lower the rate to get more kids, or we raise the rate, and, you know, we pass it off. But I think we need to think in terms of continuing to expand our non-region twelve students.
Um, yeah, one of the things I do in the report is I look at, at housing and new housing starts and stuff like that. And if I recall from past years, um, the town is, how can I say this nicely? Reluctant to expand the housing opportunities, is that fair?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. So you're right, if you're not going, if you're not going to expand housing opportunities, I mean, enrollment grows a couple ways. Housing, um, people, it's a natural movement in Connecticut, um, the older people move out. You've got a snowstorm there today, and guess where they move? They, they go down to Florida, and then they're replaced by, um, usually younger families. Um, you might, do, do you have a lot of second homeowners in town, did you guys?
We, we do, Dr. Prouda, as a matter of fact, uh, I, you know, I'm a, I'm a real estate land, land development lawyer, and I can tell you that there isn't a lawyer who practices in the real estate area that hasn't spent the entire summer doing deals to move people in whose address comes from New York City, uh, buying houses from people whose address is from New York City too. Uh, because we have an enormous second home ownership, and that's probably the, the principal reason why, uh, we've had some of the enrollment problems we've had. We haven't had, we don't have fewer houses, we just have fewer of them occupied by full-time permanent residents who live here.
Okay, um, all right, now, that should bring up a, a second question, is what did we do with that in the projection? Now remember, what, what COVID has done is, in your case, it's opened up people, uh, housing opportunities for second homeowners from the city who are fleeing, um, greater de- degree of contagion that was down there. It, uh, uh. Um, has affected, I believe, um, it's affected, um, homeschooling, and it's obviously affected, um, parents, uh, in, enrolling in a pre-K program. And so what do you, what do you, what did I assume going forward? Well, I assumed non-public, uh, probably will return a little to normal, um, although it's not fully built, uh, built in, there was nothing specific in the protection for that. I assumed your pre-K would be restored. Um, I don't know, it is possible in September, the way I hear things, that it won't be fully restored. It might take until twenty twenty-two now, um, for the pre-K student parents to feel comfortable sending their, their young, really young kids to school. Um, because we're still going to have, we're going to still have implications from COVID.
And I, I just, Dr. Dr. Prouda, just to share with you, um, the restrictions on pre-K wasn't about parent choice, it was about the restrictions we put on as a district. So I am very curious to see, um, how many parents are, um, when we do open up those restrictions, will that happen?
All right, I have assumed in the projection, just so you know, that you're going to return to the average of what we saw um, in two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and nineteen. So I basically threw out whatever was happening in two thousand and nineteen. So I'm assuming when I say that, um, that all the negative stuff that drove parents away, um, will disappear. And unfortunately, for the real estate, uh, person who's making whole bunches of, well, um, if they're selling houses, um, I'm assuming that whatever happened in two thousand and twenty will return to the past practice of, of sixteen to, to nineteen.
Yes, Alex?
Yeah, I think you were going to find that, well, while the area up here, a lot of them are second homes, were second homes. I think we're going to find it changes to some degree, that these become the primary homes, and New York become the second homes, uh, if they even keep New York. Um, so I think that the numbers of people, now whether they send their kids to, uh, public schools is another issue, but I think on balance, this is going to be a plus for the school, uh, schools in general, which Washington, it's their primary, uh, industry is schooling. So, uh, I think it will have a slightly favorable effect in the long run.
Um, with telecommuting, like we're doing here in Zoom meetings, I think that's possible. Nicole, help me out here, I don't think there's anywhere, I know in state recording, reporting, that, that we wouldn't track that. So if you can identify for when, if we're doing this again next year, um. If you can identify how many parents are, are occupying their second home, and what happens to them. Um, that would be helpful in figuring out what's going forward from there. I mean, obviously, we have nothing right now, and we won't have it until we see what people's response is next September, October.
I just know from New York City, my exposure to it, it, it's, it's like a wasteland. Uh, people have moved out in force, and they're not coming back. Um, and whether they do come back in a year, I don't know. I don't think this is going to be like nine eleven, where people got afraid and moved out of Manhattan for a year or two and then moved back. I think this is going to be more of a permanent move, uh, for a large portion of the people that move out here.
I mean, it's extra work to track it, it seems to be, since you've, you've got some data on it. Um, if you could, if you can track it and figure out, um. Who the kid, who the parents are, who the kids are, what the ages and grades the kids are, um, that would be helpful going forward, yeah.
We, we do have some of that data, and we can certainly share that with you going into next year, I think, as we've gotten some of the information from real estate agents to figure out how many are truly new homeowners versus, um, how many have now just taken their second home. We can certainly look for some of that data and provide that, so we have a more thorough analysis.
Right, um, the data that I get, homeownership, I get two sources, one, number of new housing permits issued. And two, the number of housing sale, housing sales of single-family homes and condominiums, that's what you see in the report. Obviously, um, I don't have, um. Obviously, um, I don't have, um, number of families um, going to their second homes permanently. Um, that's just not an element I track, but for you folks, it looks like it's going to be important, and we can build a statement or two. And if it, it's, and I can talk to Nicole and I can talk to you folks about, um, how you want to handle that going forward, what assumptions you want me to make.
Once again, just in Bridgewater, I'm on the zoning commission, and we have had maybe two new homes built uh, in the last six to nine months. So there, that being said, we're not getting a lot of building at all. And but at the same time, a year ago, in Bridgewater, there there were at least thirty for sale signs out on the road. And as of now, there may be three. Um, there just is no inventory available here right now.
Right.
So anyway.
I wanted to have a joke at your expense, Alex, about, wow, you're already already up to two new houses. That's that's great.
Well, one of the people is is very high-end, and I doubt whether they're going to, I don't even know if they have kids.
Okay.
Well, anyone else with questions? You have seen Dr. Proud's name for years, and now you have a shot at him. Please go, John.
Yeah, we probably all know the answer to this, but, um, how do we compare with other, you do many school systems throughout Northwest Connecticut. How is our system comparing with the others?
All right, you, um, I'm I'm trying to think, you were the first guys where I saw second home ownership making a difference. Um, everywhere else, um, we saw the same pattern on homeschooling um, with uh, younger kids, um, being held, held out at home much more than older kids. So the COVID had, um, at least in the districts I looked at, um, practically no impact on high school age kids. There, there's, there's, um, they didn't, uh, I couldn't track, because I don't get, um, non-public school data till later, whether, um, COVID was going to force more students to go to private, uh, private school where the class sizes are smaller or the economic impact of COVID, where you, if you were uncertain about your employment, I mean, one of the things you might do is bring a kid back. Um, uh, not not go to a a private school. Uh, I haven't been able to track, I I haven't been able to differentiate the two. The one thing I have seen is is pre-K pretty much disappeared everywhere and that younger kids, um, parents held out more younger kids than older kids.
Anyone else? Well, Dr. Proud, I think we, one of the problems we have, obviously, is we keep seeing things change every year to year to year. There have been massive changes here. Uh, we we can tell you that many of us have met people who used to live in New York, but for the last five or six years have lived here and put their kids in our public schools. Uh, we had a lot of inquiries back when COVID first hit, uh, from people trying to decide if they wanted, people coming in from New York, if they wanted to put their kids in public schools. And I don't think we saw a lot of kids. I think we saw a lot of inquiries. Uh, we don't know whether next year things are going to change as people decide, maybe they don't want to go back to the city. Maybe they've got a good opportunity for life here, and I think it's incumbent upon our district to to really recruit. Uh, now that we're recruiting on AgSTEM, we need to recruit at all levels, because I think there's a a large number of people who, if they were to put their kids in our schools, would see that they get into maybe even better colleges than they otherwise would. Uh, and that that's something that we've had to offer. Also, we have very small class size. That that's been a real major thing. There are very few public schools with a high school that's got a nine to one student faculty ratio. And so we're trying to figure out how best we can, we can market ourselves and how we can, we can recruit people based on the fact that this is a superior educational environment that we are offering. And now with the AgScience, there's even a fuller dimension, and it's caused us to to improve our entire science program and, uh, to really, uh, go after the other programs we have. So we're, we're hoping this will make a difference, but I know those are all anecdotal things that can't figure into your your projection, so we're sorry for that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, um, I have no spot for anecdotes in my model, um, because usually they don't come true. Um, I'm not sure the psychology, what the psychology of it is, but if you noticed on Facebook, um, you've all of a sudden got more friends of your political persuasion than you seem to have before. And if one of, you know, if someone's pregnant, then all you do is see pregnant people around you because you're more attuned to it. So I don't do it. I mean, the one thing I would think is if if we're talking about New York City people with second homes, we're not talking about people who are going to inferior school systems. They're, they're probably going to pretty good school systems. And the question will be at the high school end, whether you guys are going to be able to offer enough courses. I mean, back home, if they're going to a thousand or fifteen hundred student high school and they've got a a really bright student, that kid's going to have the opportunity to take five AP courses. I'm not sure how, how many opportunities are there. I don't know how big your band is, how big your soccer team is, whether you offer football or not. I mean, just the size, um, I mean, there's some limitations you obviously have by size. Some parents will relish that, and some parents will look at the bigger schools where they might have come from as offering more opportunity. I'm not going to talk about quality, it's just, uh, a greater variety of opportunity.
Well, that's the battle we fight every day.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Yeah, we're a very, we we have tremendous academic programs. We also have pretty good sports teams, believe it or not, uh, depending on the sport, uh, because we, you can get the critical mass of kids, you can do, we can do very well, and we've done extremely well. But you, there's a lot of things we have to work on, and, uh, and I, and I appreciate how difficult, what district we must be for you to you to project, because it seems to change by the minute here. Um, but, uh, we're, but with the people we've been able to to to, uh, bring into the school system on a tuition basis, uh, and with the AgScience program, I think we have at least stabilized our population, which is something that I'm not sure we could have done without those efforts. Um, but we are an attractive place to send your kids to school, and that's, and we just need to make more of it, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, as I've looked at it over the years, I mean, it it's, it raises all sorts of hell with with doing a projection. One of the things you look for in a projection is stability. And you guys are probably the least stable when it comes to the moving parts of anybody I do. Um, I I mean, didn't you guys go, I probably shouldn't even bring it up, but didn't you guys try to get more efficient by moving, I guess, K three and four-six or something in in one of the schools? Was that another district I'm thinking of? Guys try that once, and the parents basically revolted?
Well, we we do have multi-age classrooms at the elementary level in one of our schools.
I'm, yeah, and I'm talking about instead of three schools of, um, serving each town. Are you the guys who, um, I might, might be mixing you up with another region, but so.
You're correct. At one point, uh, there was talk of Burnham and Booth doing uh, specific AIDS groups.
Yeah, yeah, it makes it more efficient. I mean, you guys have to be frustrated because with so few kids, I mean, your your cost per pupil is, it looks awful to the public. I know that.
And yet we still have the three of the lowest taxed towns in the state of Connecticut. So, uh, even though it looks bad on a per pupil basis, it's only because of the number of pupils. Uh, if we were to, uh, to increase that, uh, if we were to increase it wildly, uh, so that we got down to eight or nine thousand dollars a kid, uh, the taxes might be a lot higher. So it's, it's, you know, but because we'd be bringing in a lot more kids and hiring a lot more teachers to teach them, and that's really where it comes. And the reason we're able to be so successful in attracting kids in the system is because it doesn't, there are all the costs of every kid we've brought in with these extra people we brought in has only been to put more kids in the seats, not to increase the marginal cost of the the cost of operating the district. So there, it's really, uh, you know, for for us, uh, it's it's been kind of a a win-win situation. But we do have three elementary schools, and they are small. And, um, the people in our towns like it that way, and or at least a lot of them do. And, uh, we will continue to operate that way, and I think that's, uh, and we're, but we're going to try to find innovative ways to use small to make better education. Uh, and one of the things we did at Burnham School, where we went to a K two and three-five configuration, uh, was we created, uh, because we have tremendous staff that really did a wonderful job on this, we created a real educational opportunity. There's something that's different, something that's really excellent. And so, um, we, you know, efficiency is not what we're trying to get. Excellent education is what we're trying to get, because we think that's the thing that attracts people to our region, and that's what makes our schools great. Uh, efficiency would be nice, but you know what? I'd rather have excellent education than efficient education that's not excellent. So that that's, that's something we've, we've put on our staff, and they have performed mightily.
Well, as a former member of the State Department of Education, that's, that's exactly what I'd want to hear from people in a small district. Yep.
Because, but at the end of the day, if 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 we, if we were producing a middling education system that was somewhat efficient, but our taxes were high, I could see voters being upset. Uh, we have, no one believes their taxes are low, but we, if you look at statistically, we are fairly low taxed compared uh, to the value of our properties and to everything, and every other feature. We don't have a lot of amenities. There's not a lot of shopping. There's not a lot of things that our towns, uh, there's not as many things as our towns offer that some that are maybe better healed, but those towns all have higher taxes. And and so, you know, you somewhat, you get what you pay for, but we have a lifestyle here that people love. Uh, and we are providing an excellent education, and I think if if we can't get efficiency, then we're going to settle for excellence. I don't think we're settling. I think we're getting what we should be getting.
Yep.
Anyway, that's just my opinion, my humble opinion.
Okay. Well, thank you for this opportunity. Um, I mean, if you have any questions, um, you see, my phone number is on and emails on the, um, on the report. Um, I hate to say Nicole, to tell Nicole this, but I don't charge to answer those. It affects your budget. Um, and you, so you can just, uh, it's probably best just to email me, and I'll give you a specific answer.
Well, very much appreciate that. We're going to do our best to confound your projections by getting more kids into our school system uh, than you could possibly have projected, but on my, and I think that's a win-win. Uh, if if we do that, that's great. If we don't, well, we've got your projections.
Not good for my reputation. No, I I like to have accurate projections.
I know, but you're trying to project the hard one here.
I can live with it. I can live with it, okay?
And we thank you very much for your hard work to try to see where where we're headed.
Could I just jump in real quick?
Yes, Mike.
Um, I just wanted to say, Dr. Proud, I mean, the, the.
Thank you. All right, I'm out.
Can you hear me okay? The data, yep.
Go ahead.
Okay, the data that we've been getting from you for many years now was a call to action for region twelve. Um, we took your projection so seriously that it looked like we had one of two choices. We could either accept a gradual and steady decline and look at being possibly one of the first districts to have to close our school system down. Um, or we could fight, and we could come up with creative solutions. And we've, we've done that over the last fifteen years. We've done everything we could think of strategically to try to reverse your, your, um, predictions. And I I feel good about the fact that some of those efforts are, uh, are bearing fruit right now.
Well, let me thank you, um, for that, because as a data geek and someone who was always in the background at the state producing numbers like this, you always wondered, you know, is it going to make a difference for a kid somehow by by getting you guys to make good decisions? And you just, thank you. I really, that that's important for, for me to know. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
No, it's absolutely the truth, Mike. I I second what Michael said. It it's really been helpful to us to have these and to look where we were headed. And, uh, I mean, the classic example is the town of Bridgewater. They had their backs against the wall, looking at very low numbers of kids. They looked at one point like they were dropping below forty kids in a K-five school, and they have turned it around. They have worked very hard, and this Board of Education has worked hard, and we have all decided to pitch in and and support this effort. And the net effect is Bridgewater was able to lead us to a great situation, but it was from looking at your numbers. They weren't heading in a good way, and a lot of us took different, uh, approaches from that. And I think our approaches were wrong, because what ended up happening is we ended up getting a better school and a better experience for the entire district and not to mention Bridgewater. So I think that's, you you should be very proud of that, that you you gave us the impetus, you lit the fire, and, uh, we ran with it.
Well, like, thank you, thank you, but, um, I'm trying to think who, Nicole, who who did you replace?
Addeason.
Well, he struck the match. I I might add a little gasoline to the fire, but you guys struck, you guys struck the match, and I I appreciate it a lot.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, if that's it, uh, Jen, you had a question? Oh, no, you're just waving. Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
All right, Dr. Proud, thank you so much. We really appreciate your being here with us tonight, and we're going to, you know, keep looking at your projections, and we we love to receive them, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Bye-bye now.
Bye. Okay, I want to move on to public comment, because these poor people have been waiting here, and I'm sorry to have put you guys back in the order, but we had these, those two items that had to get out of the way. And now we'd like to, uh, hear from members of the public on commenting on, uh, agenda items or whatever else you came to comment on tonight. Um, who wants to be recognized first? Uh, everyone's muted, so if if there's anyone here who wants to speak, you need to unmute yourself. Well, I am not hearing from anyone. Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to go on to other business, but if somebody does unmute and wishes to comment on something, I'm going to, uh, we will have a period of time to comment if no one objects, uh, because I do want to hear from the public if they want to be heard. Uh, okay, we'll move on the agenda, uh, to new business and updates. Um, Megan, the SBS principal search.
Well, as as you know, at our last, uh, board meeting, we did announce Kim Gallo's retirement. Um, I want to thank the Waterbury Republican for the, um, article that they did on Kim, and I think what a wonderful testament and celebration of a career. Um, so we are at this time in search of a new principal. We are, um, putting together a brochure, and I actually just gave you the draft of a brochure. We still have to tweak it. There's some wordsmithing. But what I want to do to see is that we are putting that out, um, as we are posting for the position. We will be having some interviews. Our first round of interviews will include some staff members, some parents. Um, and I'm I'm not opposed to having a couple of students on our interview committee to just ask some questions. Um, and then as traveling through, certainly wanting to make certain that our Board of Education is, uh, involved in our interview committee. So I will be soliciting you for some of your time so we can help make certain that, um, we find a a suitable, um, replacement and making certain that somebody who reflects the goals of our community um, and still carries forward a lot of the momentum that Kim has has given us. So that is, um, just, I will keep you updated as dates come about. Um, and I will definitely put out to the board if anybody's interested, the different dates, so that way, if you want to be part of the process, we certainly welcome.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is Chippag grading practices for spring twenty twenty-one. Ms. Gallo, Mr. Croft.
Okay, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Please let me know if you have any issues with that, with hearing me, and, uh, I'm gonna begin, and Mrs. Gallo, I hope that you will, uh, correct me or or redirect me if I stray or correct me if I'm incorrect.
No worries.
Great. So the, uh, item in your Board of Education packet this month or this week, this meeting, um, that is related to what I'm going to talk about is a letter to parents, uh, entitled, "Learning is the Only Option." So that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about some changes that we have begun related to grading and more. So one of the reasons that we have a strong culture of learning and of rigor and of high expectations at Chippag is that we have strong systems. And in my view, th- those include. And in my view, th- those include our system of grading. And despite the fact that we have a thoughtful system and a strong culture that in part results from it. Um, from my first days in this position less than two years ago, um, Mrs. Bennett and Mrs. Gallo agreed with me that there is room for improvement and a need for work with grading and reporting. Uh, to start with, we know that we want grades that one accurately reflect what a student knows and can do. We want the grades to be accurate. Two, we want grades that are as unbiased as possible. And three, we want grades that do not hurt or skew student motivation. We want grades that do not hurt motivation. So one way of looking at this topic of grading is that we have not yet solved the problem of the B minus. And I'm going to describe two students to you and you're probably already familiar with both of them. Let's take Frank. Frank aces every test, but rarely does his homework and is often late or sloppy with other assignments. James often has low test grades, but is diligent, does his homework all the time and is always punctual and participates and collaborates well in class. The odds are pretty decent that both Frank and James will end up with a B minus. A grade that gives no clear information about what the student knows and can do. One of the things that we are trying to do is to solve the problem of the B minus. So we are starting down a road that will lead to a revision of our grading system and our reporting system. Two of the messages that we really want to deliver with these revisions are, first of all, that learning is the only option. And second of all, that the consequence students of not doing your work is doing your work. Learning is the only option and the consequence of not doing your work is doing the work. And so here are the three changes that we are implementing this semester. First, our grading scale is now 50 to 100, not zero to 100. The simple reason for this is that zeros and grades near zero inappropriately tilt our grading scale towards failure. We are moving away from a scale, a zero to 100 scale that has 60 points dedicated to failure and only 40 points dedicated to success. A 50 to 100 scale devotes 10 points to each of our grades, A, B, C, D, and F. We are trying to solve a problem of mathematical accuracy. Picture a student who gets a 30 on the first math test of the quarter. This is not as rare as you might think. That student might work and learn and get 80s on the last two tests of the quarter. But that 30 exerts a tremendous downward pull on her grade and makes her grade ultimately inaccurate. Imagine a GPA scale that runs from zero to four. Giving a student a zero on a 100 point scale is a lot like giving them a minus six on a GPA scale that runs from zero to four. It doesn't make sense. And it makes some of our grades inaccurate. And that's why we've stopped using a zero to 100 scale. Changing the grading scale, however, is not enough on its own. And that's why this adjustment is paired with two others and mindset that I want to explain. The second change is that teachers may begin using incompletes as a quarter grade when students are missing work that is critical to assessing their learning. As you probably know, incompletes have long been used at the end of a marking period when a student has been absent or sick or has simply been missing work. Recently, grading and reporting have changed significantly because students and families can now access students' grades in real time. Used to get a report card four times a year. Maybe you'd get a midterm update three additional times a year. Now students and families can check their grades at any second of the day. So that means that students always have a grade for a class. Now, teachers will be changing that grade to incomplete when students are missing critical work. The message is this. The work that you owe is how you, student, show what you've learned. So I can't give you a grade at this point. This helps us reinforce the message that learning is the only option and the consequence of doing your work, not doing your work, is doing your work. The third change that we are making this semester relates to something called working lunch. So students who are failing classes or have incompletes will be assigned to working lunch. This means that they will eat lunch in a quiet place with staff support and they're expected to make progress on their coursework. Students who are failing or have incompletes in two or more classes are automatically assigned to working lunch. In addition, students who are missing critical work can be assigned to working lunch by their teachers. Again, here, the overall message is that learning is the only option and the consequence of not doing your work is doing your work. The effort here is to make our grades more accurate and to make sure that students understand what we expect of them. That they're going to learn the easy way or the hard way. As an illustration for the effectiveness, I'd like to read to you a message that was sent to a teach by a teacher to a student just this morning, and I just happened to be CC'd on it. And it illustrates pretty well, I think, the message that we're trying to get across and the fact that it's So the teacher writes, good morning, so and so student. I'm leaving the student's name out. I am missing work from quarter two, demonstrating your knowledge and understanding of the shop power tools and safety. This assignment linked here is too important to overlook and has led to an incomplete for quarter two. Based on our current schedule, the next opportunity for you to meet with me for extra help will be Wednesday morning's tutoring session. This begins at 8:30 AM and can be accessed using this link. I look forward to hearing from you either at Wednesday's meeting or with the assignment submitted before Wednesday morning. Please let me know if you have any questions. Signed, Mr. Lawler. There are a lot of schools where that student would have a zero and an F on the report card and everybody would have moved on. But that's not our place. Chippag is a place where the mission is learning and where our core values and guiding beliefs include, and I'm quoting from a poster that you would see if you were in the library in blue, but you know pretty well, I bet. Our core values and guiding beliefs include mastery of content and skills is the foundation of learning and adversity is an opportunity for growth. We're trying to put that in action. It's a long road, but we're taking some steps. Thanks. I'd love to take any questions or hear any comments.
Michael.
Yes, yes, please.
Great job. Thank you. Very thorough. Um, has this been going on for some period of time or are you talking about concepts that you're going to introduce or they're all have already all been introduced?
So those those three changes of uh 50 to 100 uh grading scale of incompletes in the middle of a quarter and of working lunch uh in the way that I described are new this semester. They have uh working lunch has existed for a year or so in a slightly different form. Um, and earlier this year, some teachers started using incompletes in the way that I described and also started using the grading scale in the way that I described. But basically, these are changes for our new semester that started last week.
How did your staff deal with it? Had any difficulties?
So the the staff um were heartened and I think felt supported um especially by the use of incompletes and by the working lunch. They know basically that we have their back. If there is any um uh, you know, concern over students who might get a little flip about a grading scale that was adjusted that they have um significant tools to deliver the message to students that I've been repeating, that learning is the only thing and we're going to figure it out.
Thank you.
Do I call on people here now or does someone else call on people? I don't feel comfortable calling on these folks.
I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, Mike, that that would have really worked for me when I was in high school or in middle school, as a matter of fact, because I was a very social animal and taking away my lunch was not something that was going to ever be in my wheelhouse so that I would get my my work done because I wouldn't want to miss lunch. So it looks like it would work for me. So I'm I'm sure it'll work for a lot of the our students.
Yes, clarify, we're not taking away anybody's lunch because nobody
I know what you mean.
Nobody's starved to to perform, but it it certainly does change the environment in which they do have their lunch.
Okay, Justin and then Lisa.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to to you and your your staff on behalf of my wife and me. Um, I I know we've kind of seen firsthand and he's probably going to kill me because he's right next door. He might hear me. Um, my my son has has really um his math grade um has gone up a couple of letters um just in the last like six weeks or so. And I think a large part of that is due to, you know, this what seems to be a concerted school-wide effort to really make sure everyone is is doing as as best as they possibly can. So on the opposite of that, have you seen or do you guys have a plan? Because as I'm listening to you talk, I'm I'm trying to figure out how easy it may be to game the system. You know, if you look at a semester-wide court, a semester course, I could do as little as possible, knowing that I'm going to get a 50. And then I I all I know is I need to get at least maybe an 80 to an 85 in that second marking period and I will still pass the course. Is there, do I mean, I I can, you're a lot of the things you have in place seem to disincentivize that, but do you still see some students taking advantage?
So I I think that the tools that we've given the teachers are going to really take the the wind out of the sails of that game, if I can use that metaphor. Um, because if a student seems to be going down that road, the teacher has the ability to say, hey, listen, I don't know what you're trying to pull here, but the work that we're doing in this class is important. And the assignments that you didn't do the other day, those are important. So you have an incomplete, which one thing that does is takes away the student's ability to play that game, right? They can't do the math. They can't see their grade, frankly. Um, and the other thing the teacher then does is say, all right, you got to go to work in lunch for the next couple of days and then give me that assignment.
So thank you. I I appreciate that. It's good to know.
Do is really, you know, we don't want to play a game, right?
Right.
Um, so what we're trying to do is um is is deflect the game, I guess is one way to say it.
Okay. I mean, but Mike, are they are they really going to not, if they really are interested in gaming the system, once they see that they get an incomplete, uh, aren't they going to just simply turn in substandard work, but just sort of make it up as they go and uh, they're they're not going to take your incomplete if there's a solution, which is to provide work with no correct answers. I mean, you know, a zero is equal to better than an incomplete.
Well, don't forget that they're managed by a teacher who knows their abilities and doesn't have to accept poor or sloppy or just getting by work. Um, and and the working lunch and some of the other things that we're doing sends that very strong message that it's about the learning. It is not about the points. It is not about checking off a box. It's about the learning. And if you've submitted something that is subpar to what we know you can do, we have a method for you.
Well, let me just ask one question. Then I'm gonna let Lisa go, which is if that's the case, then why do we have grades at all?
Yeah. So I mean, one of the things that we're doing is taking a hard look at our entire system of assessment and reporting. And we have a uh high school grading practices study group that's made up of the department leaders as well as other volunteers from the faculty. We have a middle school grading practices study group that is made up of the team leaders and other volunteers among the faculty. And we are taking a really hard look at the best practices in grading and reporting. And there's not a lot of options that are off the table. Uh, we do need to communicate to um students and families and colleague teachers and uh schools that students may transfer to or universities that they may apply to. We need to communicate with them about what the student knows and can do. Um, but we're pretty darn open to a variety of ways of approaching that. So um, this is this is uh the beginning of a significant uh look at all of these important questions.
Okay, Lisa, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, Michael, thank you. That was really well presented and I understand it much better now, but um, I have two questions. One, how how have the students reacted to this? Um, I guess you've kind of answered that with with the way you've explained it. But are they are they positive? I mean, I like the idea that the kids, it's a more positive way of teaching rather than you fail, that's it. Um, but have you heard any feedback from the kids? I know it's only been a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we we have and and there's a range of things and they include like wait, you know, kind of processing the 50 to 100 scale and what that means. So they do some of that out loud. Um, they don't like the incompletes. It throws them off. Um, they're pretty used to doing something which is really strange to all of us. And that is knowing what their grades are and where they stand on a minute-to-minute basis. And when the teacher basically pulls the plug on that by saying, sorry, I can't give you a grade right now. You got an incomplete. It throws them off a little bit, catches their attention and and in lots of situations that we've seen, reengages them with a class that they may have been a little bit disengaged with. Um, our Western Studies uh Social Studies teachers, Mr. Dennis and Mr. Peters, really jumped on this idea. Um, and it it got a lot of attention from some of our ninth grade students who needed to give some attention. Um, and the other thing is that some of, so they don't like working lunch, basically. They don't. They don't like working lunch. Um, except for a very small number of kids who like two students have requested to to always attend working lunch because they find that they can get work done. And so far, we've said yes to that, but but I think we may limit that because I'm not too sure that I want to make it a love fest.
Okay.
Um, just one other question. So do these, do we need to change the way grades are reported to universities and colleges for for college applications?
Right. So um, the school, the school profile that is included along with student transcripts and the rest of the application materials explains uh and has long explained our system for grading and uh will be updated to include this information that gives the colleges and universities the context to understand our grades, which, you know, is is at this point a pretty minor adjustment um in the grand scheme of things, but they'll get that information.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Uh, this is for all the educators uh here tonight. Um, as with Peter Prouder, I'd like to compare uh this system, the new system with the possibility that other school systems utilize either all or 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 a couple of the um the grading.
Yeah. So thank you. Um, this is um definitely in line with the best thinking regarding grading practices, effective grading practices in education. Um, the idea that the consequence of not doing your work is doing your work um is driving a lot of our uh the peer schools, some of our peer schools and and frankly, um, some of the the peer schools that it's not driving um, want to be where we are uh in terms of this process. So um, Mrs. Bennett or Mrs. Gallo or anyone can can speak up, but I I think it's fair to say that uh while this is hard work and it is a big shift because grading is deeply embedded in our schools and has been in this way for 100 years and more. Um, so it is not easy work or easy change for anybody to make, students, teachers, parents, anyone. Um, it's it's well supported by the best research and thinking that we have about schools. Um, and we have worthy models uh to follow and we look forward to being a worthy model to follow in this area.
Anyone else? Uh, Jen?
May I ask? Um, thanks, Mike, for the presentation. I agree with Lisa. I thought it was really great and it made it really easy to follow and understand. And I love the idea of working lunches and I love the idea of giving incompletes so that students really get a sense of what it's like to be in that in that gray area and and needing to kind of figure their stuff out. I guess the question that I have is, is how how do you move a student along so that when they're their senior year and they're in this in this place, realizing that once if they decide to go to college, you 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 don't get that gray area. You don't get that incomplete. You either do it or you don't. You get the grade or you don't. And trying to find that balance so that the students are really well prepared for college when they make that leap.
I I think that um in a lot of ways, what we are giving them in terms of information is um mirroring what the universities are going to give them in 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 the in a couple of specific ways, two specific ways. One, when they're in the college or university, they're not going to have a sort of bit-by-bit um accounting of their grades to rely on and and sort of do the math on. Um, at least that's my understanding and experience, which is pretty dated at this point in in some ways, but not in others. Um, and so the idea is that you you just keep working hard, right? You just keep working hard and then you you see what comes. And the other um, the other shift uh that I think is in line uh with uh, with what the colleges and universities are going to do and care about is that this points everyone, the students and the teachers, at learning, at production, at what you ultimately can do. And not at whether or not you did your homework. Frankly, we we are, um, it's so important that students get practice. It's so important that they're ready to engage in class the next day because they've reviewed the material. And we're emphasizing that in different ways. But when it comes to the grade, we are looking more and more closely, just as colleges and universities do, at what did you learn in the end? Um, and we think that our students will benefit from from that, from that emphasis on, listen, either you can um, you know, solve this calculus problem or you can't. And the other stuff, uh, you know, your punctuality and diligence, you know, we want to care about that, we want to report on that. But it's it's the mission of our school to make sure that you learn that content.
What else? Mike, that was a terrific presentation, you know, you really got me on that. I never really could possibly think how an incomplete is something other than an incomplete. Uh, I never thought of the engagement factor, that's brilliant. Uh, I think that that may get you off to some success with this, I'm really appreciative.
Yeah, and I should point out that that specific uh, idea is is derived from our teachers. Um, we've been engaging them in conversation about these topics, which are hard in lots of ways for over a year now. And uh, that specific one came directly from a teacher's suggestion.
Well, you know, I was sitting there the whole time, you start present thinking, gee, if only we could engage kids on a daily basis, like I've seen a lot of them engaged in senior project. Uh, and yeah, you figured it out, well done.
That's the aim, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on. Okay, we're gonna move on. Julie, it's your turn to present the logo and brochure. And you're and you're muted.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. Uh, so yes, we have been working, our subcommittee has been working both on a logo and on a brochure. And we think we finally have made our match where we can get them both done and launch them this spring. We specifically tonight, we had a committee meeting and worked on what we think is very close to the final logo. And we wanted to show you those final options that we looked at. So I think Megan's gonna pull those up. So these are the logos which came from a new consultant that we've been working with called called Miles Finch. And what our subgroup, which was not just the committee, but a few very informed guests, uh, what we liked the best is what's there called one F. So it's the second one down. And the really only difference between original concept one and one F is the sun is slightly different. And this was the image we liked. Um, I think almost unanimously amongst all of us who were there. It's also the one the consultant liked the best of those presented. And we made some other changes as a committee tonight. And that is to eliminate the word district and add the S. So instead of saying Region Twelve School District, it would say Region Twelve Schools. And we're looking at a couple other very subtle changes. Uh, but this is what we think we like. We like it much better than what the previous consultant had presented to us. It does have some consistencies with our agri-science logo. And we're hoping that all of you have some positive feedback for us tonight.
Well, Julie, the first thing I want to ask is, is that the Chappag River going down the middle there?
Yes, that imagery is meant to be the river which we felt symbolized sort of our district and it pulled the three towns together, since there's there's an element of that in all three towns. And then, of course, the image of the sun coming over the horizon, so looking positive, uh, looking to the future. And the colors of the blue and the green sort of represented, I don't want to say the rural nature of our towns, but the rural beauty, natural beauty of our town. So those were sort of the symbols that we all sort of liked and felt that people could relate to in our district.
Well, it's a hard job. Uh, and I I actually, I liked both one and one A, so I thought you're, I think you're right on. Um, Mary and then Justin.
Uh, Julie, I I really like the the logos, but when I looked at them, I picked one A also.
Okay, so they're very, very, great.
Just right off of, right off the bat, I looked at them all and that's the one that I chose.
All right, Justin, then Lisa.
Sure, um, I I want to, I mean, I don't know if it's, if I have any input, but I'd like to make the case for, I think it's one G. And when you guys were discussing this, did you talk about how the the one above it? I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me.
Back on the screen?
Yeah, sorry. So for one, the difference between one F and one G seems to me like the the sun in one F has the points on it. Did, um, uh, personally, I think one G is better without the points. You know, you have, i- it's, everything about it is smooth. Uh, when you introduce the points on the sun, it makes it harsher. And then for my eye, it's directly goes right to the points. And and I just think you sort of, one G has this forward or, well, I guess, moving towards the right, this momentum and this energy um, that just quite frankly gets stopped by the points of the sun. So I don't know.
Okay, Justin, I actually picked one G initially as well for those same reasons. And I was given feedback that many people perceived the roundness as the moon as opposed to the sun. And it also looks like it could be a setting sun as opposed to an upcoming sun. And so I went with, um, I know, it's all about compromise when it comes to.
I know, I'm not buying it, I.
Oh, I mean, I don't know. Um, well, how does everybody else feel?
Billy, I I actually like one F. I think, you know, the the rays are something that people get. I agree with you, I agree with your point about the fact that the um, without the rays at all, it can be confused with the moon or just some kind of a strange hill on the horizon. Um, I I think the iconic sun logo of one F is something people are gonna get.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
I like one F too, also.
All right, uh, any other comments on it?
I do, I do. Um, I I like one F, I understand what Justin was saying about one G. Um, but one F, I love the iconic sun. And I just have to say, I'm sorry I missed the meeting. But um, Julie has been working so hard on this logo. And the fact that we, she has finally found something that we all like, um, is amazing. So Julie, um, congratulations on that. And um, I'm I'm happy with either one of them, really, but um, my first choice is one F. I love, I love that sun.
Okay. Other comments?
Just, just something quickly. Uh, I like the iconic sun in one F. I, and I understand now that Julie described the um, sun coming up over the horizon. My mind is telling me, just move that sun a little higher in the blue sky. And uh, you know, the optimism will still remain. It's just like the sun is part of the river, or I don't know, in my mind, maybe, you know, if that, if I could see that sun a little higher in that blue area, possibly toward the center, it might, um, it might change the theme a little bit.
Yeah, John, I think though, if you put it in the center, it's not at the horizon, that's the problem. Because the S is making its way toward us.
That's what I'm saying, is it a matter of it on the horizon, rising or setting? Or, you know, it's clarity in the sky?
I mean, I think, I think if you move, I think if you move it, the problem is, is that because the S is moving toward the observer, if you put it in the center, you're gonna have to put the full sun in the sky. And I think that might take away from the concept of a rising sun, uh. I don't know, it's just, I, well, look, I I I think, um, I, look, I I think Justin made a great point about the 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 smoothness of the of one G, about the um, the lack of distraction, because those points do distract you away from Region Twelve schools. Uh, but on the other hand, uh, there's also the comment that was made that it looks like a setting sun. And we definitely don't want the sun setting on Region Twelve. Uh, I mean, Prouder tried to set the sun on us with a lot of his earlier reports many years ago, saying that things were going into into the netherworld of very few kids. And we we've, we've worked our way back to a rising sun, so let's not give it up too easily.
We can see, John, if there's a slight way we could move that up a little bit. I mean, I I see your point and and it is hard. And, you know, the last group got very frustrated with us because we couldn't come up with something that we even liked a little bit. So the fact that everybody here seems to like the concept of it, like most of it, I'm really very encouraged by. And Megan and Mike Croft have worked really hard on this as well. And so now it's a matter of marrying this logo with our existing brochure, which was created by the other firm. And I don't think that's going to be too difficult to do. And so the next step after that, we'll be launching this and getting it in the right channels. And we got some great input um, at our meeting today about how to do that. We will likely be asking for a little more marketing money in the budget than we have in the past year, for example, because this is something that um, we will have to spend some money on, although we'll be doing this a lot digitally as well. So, so, thanks, everybody, for your input.
Now, the question, the question is, Julie, is it gonna look good in stone? Because that's what we're gonna change, that logo in front of the school set in the sidewalk to. Uh, we'll change it to look like this, if this becomes our logo, so.
Well, part of their expertise is providing us something that looks good in different formats, different sizes. So hopefully, this will be something that's versatile and we can use um, in a lot of different formats.
Well, thank you for taking on what is an utterly thankless job, uh, normally, and uh, not easy to do because you're trying to please a lot of people. And it's hard to do with a design, and I know how frustrating that is because I designed the first brochure that my old law firm ever had. And I know what an absolute difficult process that is, so been there, done that, thank you.
So, and I think the timing is good because based on Dr. Prouder's reports and the uncertainty going forward, if we can get a little punch out there and make ourselves look a little bit better than the other schools for parents who are making decisions, you know, the timing, the timing is good.
Agreed, I think it's perfect. Uh, Alex?
I just a quick question, uh, the brochure itself, is that the endless possibilities?
Yes, so what you see on that is the old logo, so that logo would be removed.
I want to know if that was the the brochure.
Yeah, it is, and there, and we need to do some minor tweaks and updating to that, but that's essentially the brochure.
Mary?
I really liked the brochure, Julie. I thought it was really well done, thank you, you did a great job.
Great, and it wasn't just me, please, it was Megan, Mike, and the committee, and Jen, and Pete, and so, thank you.
I think it looked great on the, on in the front of the school, too. I think that different shading and things, it'll look great.
Okay. Well, excellent, excellent work. Um, best news I've heard in a while. All right, so uh, the the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. If if no one has any objection, will, and or wants to pull the minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty-one off, they will remain on the consent agenda and they will be adopted by consent. Hearing none, we'll move on to the COVID nineteen update, Megan.
Great, um, well, as, as you know, we've had to have our first school shift to remote learning. Um, it was not for the entire school system, but Chappag Valley School. Um, as you've seen in the updates that you get every week as we've been updating our community, um, Chappag is seeing more virus activity than any of our other schools. Um, but Chappag is also the school that has also been in the virus. And um, it's because of the quick action and thoughtfulness and consideration of the contacts, the situation, the practices, and we really have to credit that team. Um, I know that they call themselves the Avengers. So every time that there's a COVID situation, the the Avengers are called in and they go out. They seek the information to make certain that we are containing the um, any kind of potential contacts so we can operate as safely as possible. Um, we continue to believe that in-person learning is the best. Um, so I do want to address a little bit of what happened and why we did shift over to remote learning. Please note, this is different than our remote snow day that we had today. The remote snow day was due to weather in which we had all of our schools, but that was due to snow, not because of COVID. Um, so we do know that there was an off-campus event. Um, we are not pointing fingers, this is not about shaming, but it is about making certain that we have a known potential spread and that we're adjusting our learning space, knowing the numbers of exposures as well as the spread factors that may happen within our school bed. Again, this is all our opportunity to be one step ahead of COVID. And again, this comes from the communication that we've had within our community. We were alerted early on that there was an event, that there was someone with COVID. And we were able to make those very quick decisions to make certain that there was not re-entry into the schools. Um, I do also want to explain quickly, there was an original date of February seventeenth that was provided to our families when we first went remote. I want to explain why that date was given as well as why we were able to claw back from that date once we had more information and did some further investigation. Um, so the February seventeenth date came up because we were alerted to a potential spread that had occurred within the building. Um, an individual identified themselves as a missed primary contact. So we would have been out of school until February eleventh if we started the count from when there was a potential spread within the school. We would have taken what was on the January twenty-eighth and counted out the fourteen days. Um, but knowing that February eleventh was the Thursday before President's Day and not wanting to create a um, create disruption to the educational process, the decision was to bring them back after President's Day weekend. Well, at that time, we had talked to the Chappag team and really need to find out, how did we miss this? Because we have a very, very, very thorough trace contacting protocol. And we make certain that we cover all facets of the student's life, so trying to figure out where this miss occurred. Um, the Chappag team looked at videos, re-interviewed, looked, um, spoke to the person again, and actually found that there was no contact. So knowing that that was not a spread and we did not have a situation in which COVID had spread within the building, we were able to take the fourteen days from the event that we knew we had a known COVID case in multiple students at the event. And that's where we were able to bring it back to February eighth. Um, again, for us, when we knew we had the opportunity to come back and come back safely, we put that communication out to the community immediately. This was not something in which we took lightly, this is not that we throw around dates casually. We certainly wanted to make certain before we had made that adjustment back, it was because we had cleared the edges, and that remains important to us. Um, so with that said, I do want to give a quick update on um, COVID. And as you saw in the packet, and I will be sharing on my screen, that, and I apologize for one moment. Let me ship this into you. So I am keeping this format in the same way that we've done our last um, presentation, so that way you can track our numbers and make certain that you're following the facts and figures. I know that people get very concerned about what's happening within our schools. And one of the things I do not ever want to be seen is that we are leading by fear. We are truly taking into account all of the facts, the figures, the known information as we make decision on how to hold school. Apologize, so. Apologize. So since the day we started school in Region 12, up until January 29th, we've had four staff COVID positive cases. We have had, I apologize, we've had five, because we include Burnham School. We have had a total of 20 student cases within our schools. And then you can see those that we have put in quarantine due to a close contact. That close contact does not have to be within the school. It is a known close contact in which the school has mandated that a quarantine and remote learning take place. So as you can see, the majority has occurred at Chippewa Valley School. So taking a look, because I know that we are right now in what is considered the peak of COVID. We know that for us, we were going to see the second wave hit. That statement was, um, that predated when we were looking at the new strands of COVID. But I do think it's very important that we note, how are we trending when it comes to right now, peak time in our handling of COVID? So as you can see in the breakdown, we've had one staff member since our return to school. We've had 11 students. Again, this was dated on the 29th, um, for this chart. And as you know, as you've checked your email, I have had to do, um, I believe, three positive cases since this chart was made. But again, wanting to make certain that we are transparent in our numbers. Our families continue to have the opportunity to remote learn by choice. And so one of the things we want to do is make certain that our parents have all of the information at their fingertips in order to make that decision. But I do want to let you all know that there is a cost when we shift to remote. You know, there is an element in which we have to encrue additional costs as we shift to remote learning. But that said, the cost dollar-wise is worth it when we look at the health and safety of our community. Our goal is to stay one step ahead of COVID. That is not to jump the gun, but it is truly to make certain that we are taking the information. And when we need to shift environments, we will do such. So when we shift to a remote learning environment, some factors that people don't always consider. Number one that we are currently dealing with right now is we have staffing issues. Not just at Chippewa, but we have staffing issues for Chippewa parents who are also employees within the district. We are paying not only for the sub-coverage, but also Epsilon. And that was something that we committed to at the last board meeting, where we are providing for our families, knowing that there's a disruption due to COVID. But it also means that right now we are paying double the expense. Additionally, we have unused buses and we continue to pay for those, knowing the fact that right now, um, we have made some smart moves and I appreciate Nicole Grant's, uh, work with All-Star, in which they are now providing, um, delivery to our food meals for families who may need food during this time. Additionally, we know that we have lost in learning. Those are losses in which we're gonna have to recuperate from. It is not the same learning experience. We are certainly trying to make certain we don't lose momentum, but we can't ignore the fact that there are some, during a shift, you are going to have to now change how a curriculum is being administered, administered to students. So it is one that becomes something that we're gonna try to recover from. We also know that we have a shortened sports season. We are paying contracts without play. Again, a credit to our coaches, they are currently performing some conditioning online, trying to make certain that our students are ready for when they are able to go to competition. But it is one in which, these are all the things that this decision is not done lightly. It is one in which we have to make certain that we are able to support the community and we're able to make certain that we are fiscally able to provide for all of our employees, as well as cover the costs of what it takes to make this shift. So it's one, I just want to make certain that the board is aware. We will continue to make the decision out of safety, not dollars, but there is impact with every decision.
I have a question, uh, you, you, roughly, what's the dollar amount that this closing down is gonna cost us? Do you have any idea? Five thousand, 10,000, 20,000?
Between 5 and 10.
I know you said you didn't want to point any fingers, but I remember reading in Cave about a situation very much like this, where, uh, the, uh, board did not feel it, but the chair of the board was livid and wanted to go after the family that had done this. It seems to me that they should be responsible for the $5,000.
Well, I, I, I'm not of that mentality. And to be honest, I think one of the things that I want to make certain that we continue to promote is open communication. I think that there are elements in which, you know, there's an event that occurred. It has compromised us. It is a great learning opportunity for us to say, we are not immune from COVID and that this is the time in which we have to make certain that we continue to be diligent and that we don't relax. We have kids who so desperately want to have normality, but rushing back into normal practices. I know they want to feel like, like they are teenagers and we want to have these, these opportunities. And so sometimes we get comfortable and we think that we're in a bubble and we've been able to be fully in school and we've been able to have some of those things that are really luxuries that other, um, schools have not been able to. But I am also very hesitant to sit there and lay blame or to provide shame on something that was a decision and, um, certainly knowing that this is not one that's going to be replicated anytime soon.
Well, I just remember when I was in school, parents would have liquor parties for kids who were underage. And there were repercussions. It's, it feels to me there should be some repercussion here and not, and I don't know, I may be the only one that feels this way, but, uh, it seems to me that not only, it wasn't just a bad decision, it was a terrible decision. And I don't know what they could possibly have been thinking.
Well, and, and I can tell you, I think there's a difference between something that's illegal and something that's legal, but risky, and we don't want to have risky decisions.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Jen, and then Lisa.
So, um, I, I agree with you, Megan, that this isn't about shaming. I think it was a really, a really bad decision. I think unfortunately, those decisions happen a lot in the community and a lot of times, it just doesn't get as publicly, does, it's not as public. So I, you know, and I also think that, you know, we could also then discuss not only who attends the party, but then, uh, there's too many, there's too many people that you could point the finger at, that it really becomes not worth it. Because you could also say that people let their kids go to the party. So you, you know, really, it is what it is. And as we, um, Megan stated before, you know, some, some, we, they just crave normalcy and people have really, we, people just, we all just make really not great choices sometimes. And I think, Megan, you did an excellent job of making a really swift decision. That wasn't the most popular decision, but it was the right decision. And I just want to applaud you for that. And I think that in our community, where, uh, this is just a really difficult time for people for lots of reasons, I think we need to remember grace more than anything, because we all learned from this. I learned, everybody in this community learned that whether you have one, you have four, or you have 50, we all have our moments where we're like, oh, I shouldn't have done that. So let's just move on and call it what it is. Done.
Okay, Lisa?
Um, I, first, I want to say thank you, Megan, because I think you did a great job. And, um, and Jen, I do agree with you that I, I know it should be shamed, because we all want to return to normalcy. However, knowing, knowing now how much that cost, that mistake cost our district, I do think families and, and our school community do need to know those figures, because it, as a mom, I hear things. And on social media, it was very, um, more of a joke, um, at, at some point, that school was closed down. And I never want it to be a joke and I know kids are kids. However, it is serious and it does cost us money. So I don't want to shame or point fingers, but I think that the families in the community need to know the importance of this. So, um, that's, we need to forget about it and move on, but I think it needs to be told what, what, how, what, what really happened and how much it cost, because it should never come down to money. But $10,000 is a lot of money for our district and to close down. Plus, I can't even tell you how many kids were absolutely furious they couldn't go to school. Who would have thought? But it affected a lot of people and in different ways. So that's just my thoughts and advice about that. So it, it's, it is a serious issue and, but, thank you, Megan.
Megan? Megan, just one quick question. I know you can't get into specifics, but was this a wide age-ranging event?
Um, I, I can't say that I can give the range that was involved with it. No, um, I can tell you that we knew, based on names, it would have had widespread, um, effect at Chippewa, and that was a decision.
Okay. I'm just, I'm thinking along the lines of when the soccer, the middle school soccer team basically got affected and they all had to quarantine for a certain amount of time. That was multiple ages, I get it. I didn't, I had heard that it was a specific age group and I was just wondering why the whole school had to be shut down for, for this one age group. So that's, that was why I was asking.
Get the question.
Okay.
Mary?
Uh, I, I think, uh, I agree with, with Jen. And I, I think that if we make too much out of the fact that it costs us money, I'm afraid that the rest of the population that do not have children in school and are not connected to the schools will say, well, those people should just have to pay. So I, but I agree with the way that Megan is handling things, that we want to make sure that the, the, the staff and the students and the parents feel free to come to, to, to Megan or whoever and tell them what has happened, so that we can, we can take the right response and not say, well, we're gonna hold people accountable. Uh, so I, I think it's kind of a double-edged sword if we start to make too much out of how much it costs us to, to, uh, to fix this problem. But, um, I, so I, I kind of agree with Megan and we should, it, which should be noted, but I don't think it should be made a big deal out of, because I think we might have ramifications from the rest of the people in the district that don't have, uh, have any access to the schools.
I, I, I think, I think it's that balance that we're always trying to strike, right? Where people can come to us, we need open communication. Communication is key. But we certainly can't sit there and say, this was, this was a good thing. It wasn't.
No, right.
And we're all hurting. And this is where what we have found is how connected this community is and how much we rely on each other and the choices that are made. And that's really, if we can get any message across right now, it's that, you know, someone else's choice impacts a large part of this community, because we are so interconnected. It is what is beautiful and also a curse at a time like this.
Right.
Jen?
Exactly. I just wanted to clarify, by any means, I'm, uh, it's a huge, it's, I mean, it's $10,000 is a lot of money and, and by any means, I'm not minimizing that. I, I, I just want to say, and without getting into many details, just to be clear, one person had the party, but several, several people went. So you can't then just point your finger at one, you're pointing the finger at several. And I think it can be a really slippery slope. I think the bottom line here is that we, I, I, I hope that this community has learned a really valuable lesson. And that is what I'm hoping, and I, I, I think the dollar amount is really important, Lisa. I just think it's really tricky when you start, when you start, because, because then it's like, well, how many kids went? How many kids' parents said that it was okay to go?
I don't want them to pay at all. That's not, that's not at all what I.
And, and I understand the importance of letting people know, because maybe it will stop them from doing this again. I just think unfortunately, lots of parties have been going on for the last year and I just think that we all just need to stay really vigilant about not getting together, as hard as it is.
Don?
I'm not trying to second-guess anyone, but what part of contact tracing, what part did contract tracing play in, you know, shutting the whole school system down? Why weren't only the 20 who attended the party quarantined? Why quarantine the whole system?
Um, it's a great question. And again, we talked about the other factor that was there, where there was already a potential spread that existed within the school. We were also seeing, we had a number, uh, just when we're looking at the quarantine alone at Chippewa, we had over 65 quarantined, um, between this timeline. And so given all the factors as they are, given the fact that we found out on a Tuesday, after there was an event that occurred over a weekend, we had things that were within the school and now.
Do you know that all the 20 were tested?
We have been in contact with families.
Yeah, I mean, John, I think, I think what Megan's, maybe what her concern is, I don't want to presuppose, because there's limited information she can give us. I mean, if one person goes into a situation where they maybe had, or do something with five people, you know, you got, you got six people there, the, the person who's, who was positive and the five people they interacted with, when 20 people, it's 100. And you can easily see how you get to the point where you just can't take the chance. And then the question is, is there any point in keeping a school open when you've got half the kids out? Because we've had to contact, you know, quarantine them. It's, it's a miserable situation and, and you know, the $10,000 is not an insignificant sum of money. That is the cost of putting on the play. That is half the cost of the musicals. That is a couple of practice pianos, that's two and a half or three athletic coaches. Now, how would you feel if we were in one of those tight districts where we were forced to terminate three teams? Because we couldn't pay the stipend to their coaches, because we lost those funds. How would you like to be in a district where you didn't get to have the play? Because we had to cancel it, because we had to spend the money on distance learning. I mean, I think the $10,000 should be distributed, I think people should know about that. And they should know that the scale of that, how big that is in terms of the kind of things that people do at school. I mean, believe me, you're not gonna get anyone to feel bad that it's about the fifth of the cost of a bus. But it, you know, when you talk about things like the play and like the athletics coaches and things, there are things that everyone wants to do, which are now been rendered $10,000 more expensive, because some people decided they could, they could have a nice gathering. And believe me, Jen's right, these kids are going stir crazy. They're suffering. To be without other people around is just horrible. It's, we're going on a year of this. And this is terrible and, and worse than the year we've done, we're gonna have to do another, uh, probably nine, eight months of this, at least. And so when you're looking at a, at more than a year and a half of, of this misery, I get it. But people now, I, if I had a message for all the parents and people in our district, now is not the time to let down our guard. Now is the most dangerous period of time, because one, we're at the peak of COVID and two, we have no fewer than three potentially extremely spreadable virulent strains of this emerging. And when you put those two pieces together, a party from 20 people is almost guaranteed to produce a positive result. And I think you have to stop, you have to stop and you have to think. Parents, I know parents never want to do anything that, that hurts their children. I know parents care and it's bothering the parents at how withdrawn some of their kids are getting or some of the difficulties that they're going through. But you, you know, you gotta, you gotta think twice before you put your kids in a room with other kids that are not in their circle of close contact, because you're just asking for problems. And I think the superintendent did a marvelous job. And I think the fact that she figured out, she figured it out and they worked it through and they did great contract tracing and they were able to cut the period from February 17th to February 8th. I mean, that's nothing short of brilliant. And I think that's the thing, it, it really bummed me out when I heard about this, because we had opened the school at that point 147 days earlier and we stayed open the whole time and now we couldn't stay open. But the good news is, this will be a blip. But the good news is, this will be a blip if we're all careful. Anyway, that, that's, that's what I'm thinking. I get it. I get it how bad the kids are suffering. I really get it. Um, I, I don't know what I'd do if I were their age. It's not easy. And you know what? There's some of the biggest people that have worked really hard to make this thing work. And so I, I don't want to at all have anyone think that our kids aren't just the reason why we're open for this many days. They are one of the key reasons. So anyway, I'm sorry, Megan, was that it on COVID or have you got more good news for us?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to reports and recognitions. The, the first thing is the board chair's report. I'm going to make it short because it's, it's, it's getting late and we want to move out of here. But um, one of the things I wanted to say is I had the privilege of attending the, uh, the CAPE's legislative breakfast tonight. And uh, we had two members of the, of the state senate there, uh, one from each of the parties. And it, it's, it's, I wish we had had more legislators there, but the fact is the, the, I, I spoke about a couple of things very briefly. One of them was the need for uh, them to pass the bill that's in front of them uh, to, to allow regional school districts to also put aside 2% of their budget uh, in the non-recurring capital expense fund. Right now, only municipalities can do it. We sponsored and pushed a bill to try to get it for regional school districts. It was, it was a complete mistake. The legislature drafted the thing and they forgot that municipal schools and regional schools were under two different sections of the statute. And they only referred to one of the two sections, the one from municipals. And as a result, we got left out. So the, the, the senators were very interested in that. We're providing them additional information and, and we're going to help them get that done. But another thing that I think was, was really, uh, was really critical that I talked to them about is I, I, I told them that if they do nothing else over the course of uh, of um, uh, if we do nothing else, if they do nothing else in their jobs, they need to make sure that they have taken every step possible. And they've done everything to increase the number of people vaccinated in Connecticut. Because until that happens, we are not going to be able to get back to normal. And everything about this is being impacted by the fact that there is, there is COVID fatigue, especially among our, our children. But not the least of which among our adults. And they need to work on that because until we solve that problem, we can't solve anything else. And, and, and the comments were well received and I think that will, um, you know, at this point in time, it, it was a good, uh, positive interaction and I hope our legislators are heard from us on a variety of subjects today from myself and other members of boards of educations and other superintendents. Uh, so that, that's, but pretty much what, what I wanted to talk about tonight. And I'll turn it over to Megan for her superintendent's report.
Um, well, I will try for brevity, but I need to make certain that I also give her thank yous. Um, so I do want to thank our community staff members and our students. We have had quite a couple of weeks um, in which operations of our schools have had to shift. So from secure schools to remote learning to remote snow days. Our families have been so stoic in their resolve. Our, our students have really kept education going. And all of this is happening while we are making certain that our children are safe. And so that does not happen from a decision that is made to go into secure school or to go to remote learning. It is the people who are absolutely doing and keeping our children safe. And so I cannot tell you how much we need to celebrate our staff right now and their efforts. Um, so um, just so you know, in true Region 12 style, we are seeing every change as an opportunity right now. So while students are right now not at Chippewa, um, ONG is able to complete their floor repairs that otherwise would have been held off um, until April. And additionally, our custodians and maintenance workers are doing some deep cleans. Um, so making certain floors are scrubbed, making certain that shampoo, you know, shampoo. But we're doing some of those cleans that otherwise would happen different times of the year. So we, as, as you know, that is in true Region 12 style. We find opportunities even in our darkest days. And so that again, I have to thank the quick action of teams that reengage in different ways. Um, we did start the winter sports season for a couple of days when we were in person. Uh, Mr. Parachi worked with the coaches to provide virtual conditioning for our athletes. So that way, when we do return to in-person learning, they are able to start competitions. Um, we are expecting, I believe he gave me February 19th as one of the dates. Um, but I also have to thank the entire athletic team and also the support of Ben Allen, who have found a way to livestream in the most optimal visual angles um, of our pool and on our basketball courts and um, even for our cheerleaders who will not be on the court, but we will be recording their cheers so that way it can be shown during intermission at the basketball games. So we are truly trying to get creative so that way families can enjoy the competitions, even though it will not be a live audience cheering us on. Um, we will see if we can't get a cheer track in where we can just like make some fake applause in the cap, in the gymnasium. Um, I also want to thank this entire board and um, share that the Booth Free School Community um, has been processing the death of our second grade student, Emma Gordleone. Um, within Booth Free right now, the students all created butterflies. Um, and they're on display around the school. The butterflies were a way that we are keeping Emma on our hearts and on our minds. So I really want to thank our support staff and all the efforts that were taken specifically. Um, I want to highlight Monica Burnham, who with their efforts are helping our children through the process of grieving their friend. Um, and we are going to be looking to provide a memorial for Emma in the spring so that way we can all have some closure and say goodbye. Um, please know our hearts go out to Emma's family and um, they are just absolutely wonderful. And it is one where we, we just make certain that we are giving extra care to all of our children at Booth as they make certain that we have ways to remember a friend. Um, and also I need to again, thank our Board of Education. I think your support throughout this year, but especially these past few months. You've allowed us to make decisions based on data and science rather than fear. You have corrected misconceptions that have been out in the community. You've been able to champion for education. And I really have to say, I'm not just speaking on my own experience. I'm speaking on behalf of all of the Region 12 community. You have let us be in school. You have let us educate. You have let us do the best with a bad situation. And there have been a lot of things that have happened this year. And I will tell you, there is no better place to have all of these things happen than in Region 12 because it truly cares for one another. So thank you, board members. Um, so with that, I'm just going to quickly announce some of the personnel changes that we have. Um, we have appointment of Craig Reardon, who will be the girls' basketball coach for Chippewa. And we've had the retirement of Anne Rivera, paraprofessional. Um, and so we wish her good luck in her retirement and she will be missed. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Megan. Um, John, do you have anything to give us on a treasurer's report at this point?
Just a few things. I hope you all forgive me for my confusion concerning the 1% capital reserve fund in the, the elementary capital non-recurring. I, I heard the word capital and I got a little bit confused, but um, I agree with you, Greg. We should, and it's, it's a matter of language. Um, in the bill for the 1% versus 2%, when the bill was written to increase the amount the school district can contribute, um, they didn't, uh, was an error on the, um, you know, legislature's part. And um, it's just a matter of, um, including the regional school districts, uh, and allowing them to um, you know, put away 2% every year. I think we should work on contacting our state senator Eric Berthel and state representative Cindy Harrison. If she's, I think she represents all the towns.
Yes.
Getting them to, um, introduce a bill.
Um, well, actually, John, the bill is pending. It's been introduced. They just need to support it.
To increase the regional school districts to 2%? Okay.
Yep.
Good. Um, I know that'll pass. But in regards to the bonding for our upcoming, uh, projects, I would urge everyone to consider using that, um, 1% capital reserve fund rather than stretch out a bunch of payments for the next 20 years. Uh, I know we can't do it all with a capital reserve, but we should do as much as we can. And additionally, um, whatever we can apply to the state for, for possible, um, capital, um, grant money, capital, um, school, school grant. Um, we should try, we should at least try to offset. I think the windows would be included in that, um, in that, in that grant money from the state. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about, and in, on the 25th, um, the FNO committee discussed some of the, um, budget, uh, general budget ledger. There were a few items in negative territory, red ink. 113, light item 113, uh, a new staff member had to be hired because of COVID related, um, needs. And that, that line was underwater on 92%. The unemployment, I think I talked about this at my last, um, treasurer's report. There are people, um, our unemployment rate has gone up because, not because of people who are currently employed are unemployment, are on unemployment, but uh, people who, when, when the unemployment rates are determined, they go back five years and they look at anyone who worked in the school district in the past five years. And there are individuals who are on, currently on unemployment, who did work for the school system, who no longer do so. But that line item increased, um, I think it's, that line item increased for quite a bit and uh, that is in negative territory also, 28.13%. The good news is that with COVID, um, line 510, field trips, athletic, uh, events and late bus transportation. Um, it also includes $21,000 for, um, that was put in there for, um, ag field trips and ag, um, events. Um, that was underused obviously because we couldn't travel anywhere. So we're up, uh, 93% on that line item. So overall, the budget finished the, um, first half of the year uh, at 17.63% remaining, um, after encumbrances. And we're actually in a lot better shape than we were last year. Uh, last year, at this time, we were, um, 15.87%. So we're almost 2% of, uh, have, uh, you know, more unexpended funds in the budget over last year. Also Nicole informed us that the, uh, at the FNO committee that, um, anthem for next year, uh, the renewal will be, uh, 4.85% lower than our current, uh, 2020, 2021 school year. So that's, uh, that's some savings there, which will be reflected in, in next year's budget. Any questions?
No, uh, should we go to the next report, Greg?
He fell asleep.
No, I think he froze, so I'm going to.
Yeah, so his screen go black.
Okay, so I, I apologize. I'll jump into looking at what we have next. So next we have the, um, maybe report. Mary, do you want to share anything, any updates with CAPE?
Um, I was really grateful that, um, that Greg was, was able to go to the legislative breakfast and take on my mantra of vaccines. Um, I, I feel like now if they don't vote, I, I know it has gone out of committee to, to do away with the, uh, religious exemptions for, for vaccines. But I think now if they don't, if they can't see the writing on the wall about vaccines now, I, I just don't get it, how anybody could say, oh no, we should definitely keep this religious, these religious exemptions. I, I mean, we have Yale University here and, and Yale Hospital here. We have a premier facility in the world and we have some of the best doctors in the world. And to not take what they say as, as science and to, and to do what we need to do to get these, the kids vaccinated, I just don't get it. Uh, and, and I will fight, I will testify again if I have to, but that's going to be my new thing is how can we have a place like Yale and listen to these doctors testify? And then you turn around and you don't vote for it. It makes no sense to me. But I guess that goes along with some of the non-science that we've had in the last four years. Um, also, I, one of the things that the epidemiologists from Yale said when she testified, and yeah, I sat there for 14 and a half hours and this particularly stuck out in my mind. She said, it's not if, but when an epidemic will happen and the.
Mary, we've lost your audio.
Mary, we can't hear you.
Up today. Um, there was a public health committee, uh, public hearing today, but they sent it out at like at the last minute on Friday and I didn't get it till, till after, um, till after they, they stopped having registration. So I, and one of the things that they talked about was, um, indoor air quality for schools. I know that they talked about that because that was one of the things that they said. There's some other public hearings that I just wanted to bring up in case anybody wanted to testify or listen to them. Um, there's one on planning and development. And that's on, uh, the 3rd of, of February and that's at 10:00 AM. And if you want to testify, you must do that by the 2nd at 10:00 AM. Uh, and they talked about, uh, the committee, the committee on children. That's another one. And that's a Zoom at 1:00 PM on the 4th of February. And if you want to speak to that or you must register by the 3rd at 5, 5:00 PM. Uh, they're going to talk about school lunch debits, uh, and establishing a youth suicide prevention program. And then there's a legislative nomination committee. And that's at, on the 4th at 10:00 AM by, and they're all by Zoom. And if you want to register to speak to that, uh, you must do it by the 3rd at 3:00 PM. That's it.
Okay. Somebody tell me who's next on the list because I've lost my agenda and I have to go back and get it.
Mike.
Mike.
Mike, please.
Mike, you're muted.
Sorry about that. No, no report.
Point Alex, do you want to go?
I am up. Uh, John covered several of my points. Uh, we had a, uh, FNO meeting on the 25th. Um, we reviewed the, uh, monthly numbers through the end of December. Um, John made some reference to them. Uh, one of the particular things we focused on was the effect of COVID-19 on our budget. And, uh, and, uh, how that was affecting us. Um, we also talked about the special education costs. Uh, this is for, uh, children that are out of the region who attend our schools. And, uh, it has been several years since we updated the costs. And the costs were updated. And the costs were updated, uh, Megan and Nicole, uh, went through and they raised the, uh, the rates to the sending towns. Uh, with the possible exception of one town that did ask some questions about it. Uh, it went unopposed. People realized they've been getting away with it, with murder for years. So they were not upset when they, uh, they saw the increase. It was, uh, to, to be fair, Nicole worked out a way that, uh, if a kid was already in the system, uh, they'd only have to have a 50% increase, uh, for this year. So it wouldn't be, uh, onerous and hurt people on their budgets. We also took, talked briefly about the, the, uh, 2021, 22 budget. Um, there were no hard numbers presented. The big news that I want to convey is this year's budget will not, I repeat, not be flat. Uh, we're going to have an increase. The amount is, is still being worked out, but, uh, uh, there's going to be increase. Uh, two of the driving forces are COVID and also our, uh, teachers' union contract. Uh, those things we have very little control over. Don O'Leary, uh, uh, presented the spreadsheet, which we discussed earlier today and went through it with, in some detail with us. And, uh, uh, he's put a lot of work into it. My feeling is that if we get these things done that we've talked about today, we're going to be in good position. As opposed to playing catch-up, we're, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves in the sense that we're using preventive medicine rather than, uh, waiting till we get sick. So I think it's a good thing that, uh, that Don came up with and I think it's, those were two motions that we passed tonight, which I think were both very good. And as I said earlier, they passed, uh, five to zero among the committee. We all, we all were in favor of them. And, uh, I will take any questions if anybody has any questions.
Uh, Mary.
Yes, um, Alex, I guess most of, uh, the COVID expenditures will not come under a capital non-recurring account. So, uh, most of it, we will not be able to, uh, offset with that. But some of it we will?
I don't know. Uh, Nicole, you want to address that?
Don't have any plans to cover any COVID expenses with the capital non-recurring. Those are budgeted and covered by grants.
Okay, thank you.
That's going to be about, I think the number we came up with is about a half percent of our budget. Um, the, the excess there that we're going to have to come up with. So, uh, you know, it is, it's expensive. Anybody else? Then I shall defer to Jim.
Jim Labor.
Uh, yes, um, to follow, excuse me, to follow up what Alex was saying there. Megan has asked me to become involved in negotiations with the town of Sherman, having to do with the renewal of an agreement with them encompassing regular students and special ed students. Uh, Megan and Nicole have put in a lot of work as they do on everything, but on this, uh, issue dealing with, uh, that. So I've been involved with that with them and they've done a lot of the work. And then, uh, the nurses' negotiations have started. Not the actual negotiations themselves, but the preparation of ground rules, et cetera. So we'll be setting a schedule for negotiation, probably, I don't know, I haven't talked to Megan about it. It might be online. I'm not sure. That's really it. Those two things.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Julie, strategic long-range planning law. I think you've given us a lot tonight.
Yeah, I'll pass.
Okay.
Keep it going.
All right. Well, if that's it, that's pretty much our agenda except for an executive session. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the safety issue, a matter of personnel and LEA negotiation strategy for ascending district.
So moved.
Can I say two more things?
I'm sorry.
I just, uh, after seeing the, um, Sue's, uh, ag newsletter, I, I wanted to give her some credit for, um, presenting that. It's very well done and, uh, very, very apropos for our, for our ag school. Along with the, you know, the other, uh, the paw prints, the, uh, videos that have come out recently. Uh, it's all promoting Chapag in Region 12. So thanks to everyone who who endeavors to, uh, to do those things. And, uh, Ben, Ben Allen too.
Well said, John. Well said.
I want to say Debbie and Ben have been good teachers for me.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll get back to the motion that Julie was making to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary is, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
That was, that was an aye, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone oppose? Anyone?
Greg, who are you inviting in?
We are going to invite Megan in. Um, who else do you need, Megan?
No one else.
Okay, so just Megan.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.